I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the recalcitrations of Goldendale City Council for November 21st. We have a full council, so we have also tonight, we've had a lot of work. We've seen it on agenda, so we're going to try to stay as close to on track as we can. And we'll start with three public hearings. Open the first public hearing, it's on the revenue sources from the within our budget. The comments from the council or from people in the audience are on Zoom for the information in the packet on a public hearing on revenue sources. Pat, did you want to add anything?
This is something that's commonly done every year for cities this size. Under state law, the city can only take up 100% of the hiring tax increase. That's what we, and we're required to pull a public hearing on that. So that information is attached. If that's right, last year the city got, was assessed at $973,268.63. This year it's going to be, or this year, excuse me, is that, that's the number? Okay, sorry, last year it was $1,1847.26. This year, we're estimating $1,01865.73. So about $10,000 dollar increase in tax revenue to the city. I also have attached the expenditure reports, which we've gone through before, on other tax, or estimated revenue sources such as utility tax, liquor tax, subway waste tax, telephone tax, privilege, our private tax, water, gambling, punch board tax, leasehold tax, some of the other issues, ones back in here are having to do with liquor excise tax. City assesses a bunch of state shared revenue tax that we get in. We estimated that low, even though we've been getting between $117,000 and $21,000 just to be conservative, when we only go to $25,000 estimate there in balance or budgets. And then some of the other issues is, you know, other financial sources that the city has, which are special is the bishop property that we're selling, slaver property, and the overdorf property that the city has been selling and those revenue sources that are coming in from mills.
Anything else, Pat, on that item?
So for 2023, we're estimating, this is for general fund revenue,
Does the council or does the public have comments on this item, revenue sources? Anybody on the Zoom that wishes to make a comment, please let us know. Very none? Yes?
On this green page, the levy certification, what's that million, two hundred and fifty thousand represent all by itself?
That's just the general levy amount, which is included in the notes below. Well, not yet, this will be something that we'll finish on, isn't that correct?
There's just one other number we put in there.
Yeah.
So that's what we take to the assessor's office, because once you put in the levy, they'll figure out what the taxes are, and that's the amount that we get. You have to estimate it, but you can estimate high, but if you estimate lower, you only get the amount that you estimate.
So we estimate it a little high.
You always estimate a little high, and then when it comes back, you get what you have, and then there'll be the adjustment administrative refund amount. That would be the difference in what you estimated to what you actually got.
So we'll see some more numbers later on?
Yeah, they don't fill those more out.
To rectify this.
Yeah. So after we do the year closeout and amend the final, you know, next year we'll amend the budgets, probably sometime in the beginning of the year, and I'll come back to you with numbers.
January?
In January, well, January, February.
Any other comments or questions in this particular hearing? If not, we'll close the public hearing on revenue sources, and we'll open the public hearing on the 2023 budget. You have that in your packet? And you're calling for comments or questions or any discussion on that 2023 budget? Pat?
So I'm not, since we got a lot, I won't read all the budget message, but... So there's some, you know, one-time revenue sources in here. We need to go back to the county, which is important, on the second page, about three quarters way down where the city has forgivable principal loan for design in the amount of $205,500 for design of a project that has received grant of approval from the county economic development for an amount of $250,000, and when combined should cover the cost of the design. This is something that I've got to make contact with Dave McClure on to make sure that they roll over that $250,000, because we have not expended that money. And this was something we just learned about this, well, today. And then some other things down here, so pending the final review, the city has been selected to receive a small business innovative fund grant in the amount of $1,036,000, as well as Public Works Trust fund loan in the amount of $2,289,702 for the construction, and $298,656 for engineering. In addition to that, the city has submitted a TIV grant for $1,8682 for Schuster Street reconstruction. We won't know if we get that funding until after Thanksgiving sometime. But taking these potential projects into consideration, budget limits will be necessary in the first few months of 2023 if we get all the funding. If you guys don't know what the small business innovative grant is, I talked to one of you, is the city, we applied for a grant to build an incubator business building and industrial park. And these are extremely compatible, and I'll be honest, I was shocked that we got it. Most small cities this size do not get these grants, and we were successful in getting it. It is a 100% grant, and this is one-time money, but this is a really challenging grant, because we just got notified of the award, and we have to have the building up by May 1st. That's kind of short, or no, May?
May 1st?
It was the May 1st?
Well, they're June. May 31st, June 1st, yeah, sorry. So it's a real short window, so. They have me messed up today, because they told us, when we got the letter, it was June 30th, and then we found that the day is June 1st. So that just cut 30 days out of an already tight window. And it's, it's going to eat up a lot of my time in getting this paperwork to them and getting this engineered, and the scope of work laid out, the schedule laid out, but the deliverables. The good thing on this grant is it is a quick turnaround. Every 30 days, we send our deliverables in by the 15th of every month. Within five days, they will put that money back in our bank. So it's a pretty quick turnaround. We just want to make sure that we can meet the deliverables. So with a short window, we may have to leave parts of the interior of the building. It'll be usable building space is the goal, that we may not be able to finish our aspect we originally planned for when we submitted the application, because the window's just too short. So we want to get the building up, get it insulated, put power in it, put a bathroom facilities in it, lighting, you know, those type of things. And a heating and cooling system would be nice. And then later on, then we can actually start using the spaces, and as that goes, build partitions to petition off those spaces for separate entities using them.
Yes?
What types of businesses? All types, A to Z, or is there specific?
That's kind of the goal we would like to have, you know, but the one thing we got to be careful of is we can't have too big of mixed uses in there. We can't go from, you know, a welding facility in there with an office sitting right beside it, because we have to have separation. So we will, you know, we have to make up some rules and guidelines for how we're going to operate this. How it normally works is any of the tenants would be, they sign up five to six-year agreement with the city. And what the tenant does is the first year, they're just, what we're trying to do is help them get off the ground to get where they're standing alone and showing that they're a consistent business for four or five years, so they can go to the banks and actually get loans for their business that relocate someplace else in the community. So the, you know, the first year, there is no rent, but they do pay a cost share of the electrical costs that come with. The second year, they pay a quarter of what the real rent would be, a quarter of that. The next year goes up to 50 cents, that's 75%, then 100% year six. What we want is hopefully year five, year six, they're out the door.
And what kind of process are we going to use to establish the rent?
For market value.
Per square foot?
Per square foot, yeah. For commercial space in this area?
For commercial space.
And these incubators, they do everything from making candles, breweries, the whole range of production.
Right, well, that's why I asked, because people have illustrated pretty well. If somebody wants to start a fabrication business right next to a food.
Yeah, that won't work.
That would apply.
There's quite a standard.
We did talk about eventually closing one end off of the firewall and make a separation where there could be a more heavy industrial use in there. But we're not that far at this point, we're just, we really got to focus getting the building up.
Get the building up, right.
On the monies with the development, county development, how much was that? What was it set for, and can you elaborate more on what you guys just found out about it?
Well, we kind of already closed that meeting. This is another public hearing. I can answer that after the meeting if you want.
Okay. So you guys just moved on really fast, so, okay.
Are there any comments or questions on the 2023 budget public hearing? Any on the screen here, anybody on Zoom or on the telephone? Hearing now, we will close the public hearing on the 2023 budget, and we'll open the third public hearing, and this is on the Goldendale Municipal Code, Chapter 2.04, and Pat will give us the details on that hearing. It's open.
Yeah, these are the changes we discussed last time. I'm not making modifications to them at the last meeting. The biggest changes will be, meeting time will be, will be changed from 7:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. So we did add, as requested, where we added a new public comment section right after roll call, so that there will be closed public comments, agenda business items only, so that prior to city council discussion of business item that public has, that shows up here or on Zoom, like to comment, they can do so. And then towards the end of the meeting, we added another open public comment where everybody can comment on any thing they would like to within reason. And that's mainly the majority of the improvements.
And this will take about, I think, the 1st of January, is that right? If it's?
Yeah.
Yes? Yeah, it'll be presented.
It's down below.
Yeah, it's from down in the same.
This is just a public hearing.
Are there other comments on this change proposed for the Goldendale Municipal Code, Chapter 2.04, and this primarily is our agenda that we will follow? It's just to make it more user-friendly for the public, in my summation list. Any comments? If not, we'll close the public hearing on the GMC, Chapter 2.04, and we'll go on to the agenda itself. And I need a motion for the agenda. If there's comments or questions beforehand, I'd like some motion to help us to begin our meeting.
I need to approve the agenda and the consent agenda, approve the minutes.
I second that. Then it's been proposed and seconded to approve the agenda and the consent agenda for this session of city council. Are there further questions or comments from the council? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item, presentations, and the first one is Concerns of Memorial Bench at the World War II Park, and this is presented by Debbie Nelson.
So the name of address?
Okay, my name is Danielle Clubbiden, address is on Pipeline Drive here in Goldendale. And Debbie, you want to say yours?
My name is Debbie Nelson, it's 1115 South Mill Street.
Good evening, I know some of you, but some of you I don't. I just want to say thank you for hearing us. This is really important, specifically for Debbie and her family, but also for our community here, I think. So we'd like to introduce ourselves, I'm Danielle Clubbiden, like I said, and this is Debbie Nelson. And we are here to ask the city permission to get a donated bench, which her family is going to purchase, and get it installed in the World War II museum, or the World War II park. If you can see this, this is the north end of the park, and this is the, just signifies the, where the old pool used to be. So there's already a bench here, here, there, and then there's a marble bench over here. And we propose to have one right here in the center. And the reason for this is because in 1972, her cousin Cindy, she was, she was plain tagged around the pool and accidentally jumped in to not get tagged it when she was only 15 years old. And so she jumped in, and unfortunately, she jumped in the short end of the pool. Well, what happened was she became a paraplegic. And in the meanwhile, after that, three years later, incredibly, when she was 18, she learned how to drive as a quadriplegic, and was the first person on, in the eastern side of Washington to get their driver's licenses as a quadriplegic. I mean, it's a pretty astounding story. Yes, and so she, basically, she persevered through not only learning how to drive and all of that, but she got married, she worked in our county at the auditor's office as a secretary. She was just a really good model for the community, and this is more of a celebration of her life that she wants to, her and her family want to do for her rather than a dedication. All of the costs would be from Debbie and her family, except for the security of the bench, like all of the other benches are. That would be done by Allen's Building Center, who has already chosen to help and do it for free for them and their family if this is approved. So is there any questions in regards to any of this?
Will the names be, name be on the bench and everything?
I would like Cindy's name on it, and she always told a joke, she loved jokes. And as her and I were having lunch together, she came up with a really good saying on it to put on there.
Basically, it would be, as you sit here, tell a joke to each other, you know, to enjoy.
Yeah, she always had a joke.
Is, what is the bench made of?
It's exactly like the, these, these other three benches, not the marble bench, which costs like $15,000, but it's the same as these. It's a six-foot bench, it's made out of recycled plastic. And actually, on the back of this, we have, it's, it's a traditional bench. It's, it comes from the park catalog, which is where the other benches that are out there were found, or were purchased from, so it's going to look just the same. It's just going to be right here in between, on the north side, in between these two benches. Centered, this isn't exactly centered probably, but it's going to be exactly centered. Are there any more questions?
No, is that concreted into the ground?
It is, it's going to be just like these other three. Same way, and that's where Allen's Building Center is going to be helping.
Yeah, they're weighted down pretty good.
So they'll be secure and done correctly.
Any other comments or questions?
You said possibly two, are they going to be right next to each other, or would you do one on the south side?
I've decided one, I was going to ask for two, but I've just decided one, just to focus on Cindy, because she was so amazing. So, just something to honor her, so.
So do we need a motion?
The only other thing I was wanting to bring up, Pat, was next week we have a meeting with that Park and Rec Committee that we're on, Poberto. Do you reckon we should go over the proposal at that meeting to make sure it lines up with the vision we got going on with that park in the first place?
I don't think so, I think it...
Does it make any difference?
No, it wouldn't make any difference.
Good.
I think it's great idea. So are we looking for motion at that meeting?
I think it's just a matter of motion, yes.
I'll make a motion.
They just need to give us her direction, so.
Okay.
You don't need a motion.
Consensus?
The consensus is fine.
I agree, I think we have that. Everybody admires that.
Was your phone, thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
The next presentation is by iWork, building management software. By Mike McKee and Devin, and they're on the screen here. They'll give a presentation, you have it in your, in your packet. And following their presentation, you have comments or questions with Doug Frantam from Public Works and Jeff Railey from the Building Department, our compliance officer, will both be here for questions or answers to your question or comments that may need to be made. With that, we'll begin the presentation. Here we have iWorks ready to go. Please begin.
Well, great, can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Perfect, so I'm Devin with iWork Systems. Well, notice on the call, we have Mike McKee, he's our technical expert. We also have Shada Anderson, he's our community development representative, and I am the Public Works representative for the state of Washington. So we just wanted to be on here to answer any questions that you may have heard from Doug and Jeff. I am happy to share my screen, but I noticed that it's disabled. If you want me to, I can, if not, we can just talk through our recording.
If we do that, then it stops recording, so we have to record the meeting.
I'll just have to be a great storyteller, that's totally fine. So first things first, who is iWork? We provide a solution for community development and public works. Software to help manage and track things like your work orders, your code cases, and your permitting, that's kind of the umbrella of your service. Our customer support and service, we've been in business for over 20 years. And with that, if you're a Golden Dale club like iWork would be fit, you get access to three main things of iWork. First is unlimited users to use the solution, training, and support. And that's one of the main things that we feel that makes iWork unique. If you would like to contact any of our current customers, we work with La Center Washington, we also work with Snahalmish and some other agencies, and doing demonstrations with Doug and Jeff and also Dustin. Those are the agencies that are kind of most similar to what you are working at. So the main things that I wanted to focus on is, in terms of Doug's work in the Public Works Department, this solution will allow for him to document and track all citizen requests that are coming in. So if you have citizens calling in for something like a pothole, for example, that request can be documented in the software with all of the citizen information. And then Doug can use the software to help manage and track the work. So associated costs, what employees were on it, what was the given rate, any equipment, material, or inventory, being able to have all that on the work order and have a total cost per work order. You'll also be able to generate reports, so I don't know what reports the city council would want to see, but for example, if you wanted to have a monthly work order report, how many pothole repairs do we do, or how many sign replacements, or things like that. All the data in the software can be exported with the configured reporting tools for Golden Dale. I'll just give Mike about a minute to maybe talk on the code enforcement side as well. Yeah, appreciate that, Devin. Hopefully you guys could hear me, I'm using a headset that I typically use. But yeah, on the community development side, same idea, you're able to track like all the permits that you guys may be issuing, whether that be building permits, electrical, things like that. Don't say, the biggest thing that's involved with iWork is the fact that you can track everything that's happening, so all the costs. And for council meetings, what we typically find is it's going to be through that budgeting timeframe. You guys know exactly what's coming in, how much you have going out, so it's going to help through those periods of time. As far as like, you know, the community development with the code enforcement side, it's going to give you the same capabilities where a citizen can go online, they can apply for those permits or those, you know, request a code case for tall grass, or it might be. Just gives a, I guess, an easier way for a citizen to communicate this information back and forth with you guys, and it makes you guys construct that information a little bit easier rather than being on pen and paper. Now, it's really kind of hard to show you guys the value there without really sharing our screen, so I apologize. But you know, basically from our explanation, if you have any questions of exactly what it does, or have any of you guys seen us before?
This is, Devin, I'd like to intervene on this just a little bit, and kind of give you guys the council of background of, kind of, I mean, we've been looking at systems like this since about 2017. And we've looked at several this year, myself and Jeff have been in different meetings with people similar to iWorks, like MyGov and GoGov and things of that nature. But basically, what we're struggling with is with our work order system, a work order touches hand probably five to six times before it ends up in a file that... Do you think, if any questions were to arise from it, if you're talking to, probably a two to three hour process from start to finish of just the work order, where a system like this, we would be able to, any of us, Pat, myself, Jeff, could, you know, look up an address, see what work was done there, or what may have happened there. This system also does our inventory, where it's not all just on paper, which is kind of a struggle as we move forward, and it also, like Mike and Devin mentioned, it makes it so I can look at it and see where we're at financially at any given point in time with, say, inventory, you know, how much we have in certain departments. at any given point in time with, say, inventory, you know, how much we have in certain departments, things of that nature, as well as GIS mapping that is probably first and foremost for us to locate and changes in pipes, roads, fine hydrants, you name it. And Jeff may be able to chime in and add kind of what the building department, you know, the, how this is going to help him out.
Jeff? Jeff, you're muted.
How about that?
There you go.
All right. Sorry about that. Sorry, Doug. I, I, yeah. The building department needs and the code enforcement side needs a way to track it from conception to bed. And it's, my best example is the 425 West Garland property that we just cleaned up. For Shelley and I to sit down and go through five to eight years' worth of files and think that we got everything is, it's not possible. It's, it's just not. And like, I'll take that case, I missed them thirty-two hundred and forty-eight dollars. And with this tracking program, I would have known exactly where that money was at. I would have sent it off to the attorney. He would have put his grace on it and filed the lien. And we would have known every phone call, every email, every complaint that come in instead of the Jeff, Shelley, Goldendale method, you know what I mean? And it would bring us into the Twenty-First Century. And that's, that's what we actually need. I needed a tracking program that will go from conception to bed. So this system does it. We've looked at, I've looked at five different companies and iWorks is pretty much the one that wrote the script. So I like them. I like what they do and their prices are on them. So I'd like you to actually look at the prices and, and think about what it would be for someone to come in, track our entire city from pavement to addresses, parcel numbers, inside the city limits, what we've got. And then Doug or I be able to turn around and go know exactly who's standing there, you know what I mean, that we're talking to. So it would be a great program. We, for my side, the building side of it, it would track every cost and show you what everything costs from top to bottom, you know, in my department, which I truly can't do without going to Shelley, Tracy, and Sandy. So yeah, it's an all-in-one. You can walk around on your phone and take a picture and send it to Jeff or send it to Doug. So yeah, I, I like it. I'd like them to explain to you guys what you want to hear out of it. Because they've told me everything I didn't even know, so.
Another, and this is Doug again, another intervention is for me that's been on the council for a while since Garland York was here. We did a lot of mapping, aerial photography, things of that nature that kind of, once it was all collected, was too big a file for us to use in the field. And we've met with iWork, Dustin from Pioneer, and Devin and Mike. And I, we're all pretty confident that we'll be able to use all of that information that we have stored that is not really usable and we'll be able to overlay it on this, onto this program. And everybody in Public Works will have access to that, which in, in our day-to-day, it will be used as well. And like Jeff said, I've looked at, I mean, I've been looking at these things a lot longer than he has. And cost and usability, I, I like the, yeah, put, put iWork at the, at the front of the line because the usability of it for people that aren't necessarily real technically savvy and things of that nature, it's, it's super simple for the guys to use on the field. It's, it's like everything in one and, and like Jeff said, at a great price.
Council, do you have questions or comments you would like to make? Yes, Steve.
With an endorsement like that from Doug and Jeff, I don't see how we could turn it down.
That's, that was my feeling.
And I think Pat's on board. It's, I think.
Questions? One, does the city have a RFP requirement for the amount?
For this?
For the amount of fifteen thousand dollars?
An RFP? We don't need an RFP for professional services.
But does this a purchase of a program?
It's a purchase of software more than.
Right.
Whatever, so.
Right.
I'll check, but I don't think we need one.
Okay, so.
Another thing, Bill, yeah, Bill, the guy that adds to that is we've made an agreement if we choose to go this route with iWork that we will begin the process this year, but payment will not be due. Well, we'll get billed January one of 2023 with a net thirty. So we wouldn't actually be paying that original seventeen thousand dollars on the iWork part of it until it would be due by the end of January. And then on the PW one side of it, which is kind of, simply put, Google Earth Street View kind of thing where they, where they go through and camera all of our streets, their condition, signs, things of that nature. That would not come due until that was in place and working, is my understanding of it, Devin, if you could maybe intervene there.
That's correct. After we come out, we do the engineering service, collect the imagery, do the pavement assessment of all Golden Hills roads, and collect their cyan hydrant data. Once we pull that into the software and it's completed, then the invoice is sent. And that was a service that we did do for Snohomish, Washington this year.
So do you guys come back and do the pavement grading every so many years or are we responsible for doing that?
Great question. So that's up to you. We recommend every period of five years to have your pavements reassessed. But that would be up to you. It's not, the pavement assessment is not an auto renewal. You would call to us and say, hey, assess our pavement.
So I'm not sure if you're aware, as there are other cities, I mentioned it, in Washington State, TIB has dozens of rating programs for cities under five thousand population. But with that said, is more often than not, when we put an application in, they have it graded in better condition than it truly is. So it would be nice to have that information so that way you can say, this is the current rating, the current pursuit of our system. And then that'll, they, they always come out and evaluate anyway when we submit an application that at least then we have something to provide them in hand of how we determine that the rating is in a much worse condition than they, they, they have it rated at.
So I, I'd like to just point of order because I still have the word. So my question is, if there is any RFP requirements, I'd like to find out before we make a motion because I don't want to break the law if there is supposed to be a cost representation given or a cost comparison. So is there, does the city have any cost requirements to make that, provide a comparison?
You can still make the motion with the understanding staff not to proceed until we have verification of that.
Okay, well, I'd like to see that as first. And then the second is, is this part of the department budget already? Or where is this money coming from?
This would come out of next year's budget.
For that department or city general fund?
Part of it would come out of general fund, part of it would come out of water, part of it would come out of sewer.
Do we have a breakdown for that?
Well, it would be fifty percent water, fifty percent, well, not with fifty percent, probably thirty-three percent water, thirty-three percent wastewater and probably thirty-three percent streams. And then little over like fifty-one percent of that would come out of the general fund side or on the city hall side. So seventeen thousand five hundred. So Mayor, then what the city council is bringing for a three-year contract, is that what we're starting off?
That's.
Is that what we're, we're doing?
Yes, that's what's called for.
Yeah.
So, Mayor, so have you finished your?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's it.
That was a lot I had to say.
So. Three-year contract, does it total cost fifteen thousand dollars? Because I heard fifteen, I heard seventeen, and I see a lot of annual. I see a lot of annual costs.
Public Works side. To get it set up, seventeen thousand.
I think, can I intervene on this?
Sure.
So it's seventeen thousand dollars upfront for the iWork stuff. And then it has a yearly renewal of, I believe, five thousand dollars.
Okay.
And on the PW one, which is the street view stuff that I discussed, that is fifteen thousand dollars. And you'll see that kind of separated in almost like two proposals in the council packet. And that one does not have yearly, it's every three years, I believe.
Just to make sure, we're looking at the same paper there, Doug. So clearly on my side, unless I'm missing something, what I have, you guys, is the Republic Works and Community Development Combined Package, which was permitting, code enforcement, that online capability is for the, for the citizens to apply online, make payments online, as well as the public works infrastructure for water, sewer management, as well as your water treatment plant and your different facilities. It came out to twelve thousand dollars annually. It was a one-time of seventeen, so we, there's a five thousand one-time setup cost, but every year after is twelve thousand. Make sure, and Devin, you're listening, if that's the right proposal we sent over, right? And Doug and Jeff, is that the one you guys are looking at as well?
Yes.
That's right.
I just wanted to make sure that we have the same one. I don't want anybody to get confused over there.
And then you, yeah.
And then the engineering service, once that is completed, that would be a one-time invoice of fifteen thousand dollars.
So I would like to make a motion to table this item until we can get accurate numbers on the ordinance requirement because the fiscal impact listed for us is fifteen thousand. The presentation shows different numbers. So I'd like to table this for the next session.
Yeah, my mistake, so.
And then we can get those answers as well.
I second that. Table this. Did you second?
Yep.
So Mayor, did you second it to table this item until we have more information on the difference in the figures? Are there comments or questions on table?
I, I have further questions about the project overall.
Okay.
Just who's going to be the lead for IT for the city and taking care of the city's website and implementation? Call in Public Works or in front office or is that a Rad Comp team?
Or the front offices, the staff and Jeff and Doug?
I don't think the IT leads.
I think so.
So if there's, Devin?
Yeah, so it's a little hard to hear. I can hear now.
So, okay, so if there's a software issue, you guys fix that issue. Is that correct?
Yep. Everything is stored on, we use Amazon Web Services, Scout Cloud, to store all the data. And then if there's anything IT-related, yes, that would be on us and our support team.
And just to chime in on that service as well, typically what we tell everybody, you send us an email, we'll respond within twenty-four to thirty hours on emails. If you give us a call with some issue with the website or the software, we answer within two to three weeks. So our, our service is there. And what I tell everybody, honestly, they sign on is give us a call. It's way easier and quicker than an email.
We have a motion on the floor and second it to table this motion. Take it up at a later meeting. We need to call for a vote. Steve?
It sounds like it's reasonably time-sensitive, so could we do it by the next meeting?
Yes.
What more do we need to know now?
Well, I think clarifications of what's paying for what and what's actual cost. I mean, it's not really spelled out very well.
We definitely want to do it by next meeting, that's for sure, because we don't want to wait till the end of the year.
Yeah. And then just information as to if there's any requirements of cost comparisons since it is a large purchase that the city has that in place.
That way we can clear all those questions, yep.
I mean, otherwise it sounds great.
Yeah, it sounds, it sounds great, it sounds, yeah.
With that, do we have a vote to block two? Table this motion until the next session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion's blocked.
Tabled.
Taken up after December fifth, City Council Session, that's the next one.
Exactly. Have you seen it up, guys?
We, I guess the end of that there. What was the last?
So we're going to bring it back at the next council meeting, just to make sure we're all on the right procedure.
Yep, that, that will work. And then we'll get you, and maybe we'll have like another sit-down just to make sure we have the numbers right that you guys are all seeing there, make sure everything, everybody's on the same page. If you do end up needing like some sort of RFP sort of process, there is also options of sole sourcing, right? So if that does come up, let us know. We can always talk to you through different, different alleyways, but that, that'll work for us.
Yeah, I'm familiar with sole sourcing.
So, okay. Well, guys, everybody, I appreciate letting us take your time. Hope you guys have a great evening. I'm going to jump off and go put my kids to bed.
Thanks, guys.
I appreciate Jeff and Doug bringing their expertise to this.
Thanks, Doug. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Yep.
We'll go on now to the department reports and we'll begin with Pat Munyon, our Director of Public Works.
Well, mainly just been working on budget activities and the last week or week and a half or since our last meeting, since we found out that we were getting that grant funding for this small innovative grant. So that's taken up a lot of my time, getting a lot of documents that have to be sent off to them. Maybe two years with the past budgets, we've got those documents to them. We've had to fill out a bunch of forms. We do have our engineer on standby on moving forward with this project because it has to do quickly. We need to get this design, the schedule out for deliverables. I think I kind of went over how the deliverables work with the schedule is we need to meet those increment schedules. Smith, which every month submit the money we've spent on those deliverables and then we'll get reimbursed as we move forward. But we want to make sure, we can't submit any, any activities over June or May thirtieth. So May thirtieth is our cutoff date. So we want to make sure that we meet one hundred percent of our deliverables to tell them, which is making it really hard to put the end of the project together, you know, like, you know, I don't want to fall too short and not spend all the money I can, but we can't overshoot it here. So I want to be safe to make sure that we get the structure up and moving in the right direction so we do have that for the community to use. It will be the only incubator business building inside ClickItAtKell. So it, it, they are a good thing and they are a positive thing. There's businesses that are going to go through it. They're not going to make it. There's ones that will make it. And the goal is to have them stay in within our community and, you know, obviously, you know, they're paying taxes when they're in the community and they're providing a service to the community. And hopefully creating jobs in the community.
And Steve?
Is there an obligation for them when they finish their term to stay in the community?
Well, you're kind of at their mercy a little bit. But I mean, the intent is they will sign an agreement, a good faith agreement, that they'll make every effort to stay inside the city. You know, and some of the challenges is, is, you know, if we don't have enough applications waiting to get in there. waiting to get in there at a later date either, when we're having openings, there's no reason why we say you need to get out. They, if they're willing to pay their full rent, stay there, we can do that until we get an application and say, okay, now we're going to give you so many days' notice or, you know, months' notice to relocate. Cause the object is to get them out of the building and the standalone business.
Given, uh, given supply chain issues and labor issues, which your level of confidence that we can, confidence that we can get this done by May thirtieth, a level that, um, we can then, obviously, there's going to be a lot of things that need addressed that the city wants to take care of. But can we get it by the end of May to a complete building with HVAC and everything done?
I can answer those questions next week. Okay. So, uh, and it depends on, you know, I, I would prefer still structure building if we can get the still structure building in time. If we can't, we know we can get the full barn in time. And if that's what we have to do to get the building up, that's what we will do.
And we just saw how long the concrete on fire, so.
He's still on line, so I can't, I don't want to tear it for anything.
In winter.
What's that?
Oh, just thinking about minor things that can cause extremely long delays, like getting concrete from sidewalks on fires. Um, and in this case, if we get outside of our window, we don't get reimbursed for the rest of the work, so.
Right, and that's why it is, well, we'll get paid for the deliverables we did, we're just going to get stuck with more out-of-pocket to finish the building at a later date. So, I mean, we will see benefit out of it, uh, but that's the biggest challenge is, I don't think there's going to be a big demand for concrete as early as we're going to start, cause we're going to end up paying a premium for the concrete. Um, we're going to probably, you know, be polaring in cold weather, and, uh, which is going to be more expensive concrete. We will have to put kelp seed in the concrete to stop it from freezing, um, we will probably put a fiber in the concrete just to make sure the floor stays solid and doesn't crack out on us. And we will also be having to use blankets to cover the concrete to help it from freezing as well and keep the rain and weather off it, right, it cures. But that's some of the challenges with building this time of year or any time in such a short window where you're building concrete and you, um, we got to let that concrete probably this time of year, I'll talk to Jason, but I, I'm figuring at least ten to fourteen days cure time before we can put any equipment back on that to, you know, with lift equipment or anything to get up and start building a frame. Or we build the foundation for the still building of four barn, put the full barn up, and then pour the concrete inside, which is, can be done, it's just a little bit more work that way. It's a little bit easier when you have a little space to work in.
It's a good opportunity, it's a tight timeline, so just as you evaluate it.
It's a tight, tight line, and that's why putting the, the schedule and the deliverables, um, there, there's another way we can do it, we can do it by reimbursement, but I do not have time to go through and make an itemized list of every part and piece we would need. That, that would be fifty pages worth of documents going through and itemizing all that, and I'm probably going to miss something. I think it's better to go with the deliverable route and move forward.
Yep, I would just evaluate your time, determine whether you have the resources to put towards it, and if we have the time to actually get this enough done to make it worthwhile. Don't hesitate to turn it back, that's the best solution.
I don't want to get thrown up if I turn it.
I'm really surprised that they have such a short time, the only thing I think of is July first, that's when the new budget comes in, and maybe the money that we have going to be receiving is for twenty-two, and they want us to spend that money before the next physical.
Well, there's, there's another element to that side, a hundred and, um, I think it's a hundred and eight thousand dollars of that money is an easier deliverable, cause we will do be doing an RFP for that one, so it's my nature, it feels comfortable for, for, it is for professional services because of the money amount.
Right.
Um, to hire a business consultant, which before we submitted that application, Nicole went around, um, with the chamber and asked several businesses if they would be interested in allowing a business consultant to come in and give them some advice on how to streamline their business, and there are several of the businesses. Did you come and talk, down and talk to you guys at all? Uh, is that something you're interested in?
I don't, you didn't, I didn't talk to them.
Um, we'll talk to them and see, because if we have the consultant, you might as well utilize them and come in and talk to them and give them some advice and, um, and hopefully utilize them to their ability, but that's money that will be used in that arena, it's a hundred and eight thousand dollars.
That'd be good.
So, is it, on, on this project, does it, does it have to be spent or just allocated?
What money?
Yeah.
I have to spend everything I put on a list and schedule one, the, so schedule one's going to be doing site work. You know, schedule two is going to be putting the foundation, and schedule three is putting the, the, either the floor in or the building up, and schedule four would be either putting the floor in or building up. And then, you know, then, you know, then it's going to be insulating the building, then it's going to be, you know, siding the building.
But is it reimbursement after the work, is that, or can it just be allocated by that date?
Every time I do one of those deliverables, so groundwork, it's, so, that doesn't mean I can't move into phase two of the project, I have to submit that and get authors, well, I think we do have to, I have to submit, excuse me, I was wrong, I have to submit, get approval from a proceed to phase two, which is supposed to happen very quickly. And then, then I can move into schedule two.
And then allow it to spend.
And schedule three, and then, yeah, and then, uh, within five days after I submit, get the notification to move forward, we should have the, the money we've already spent back in the bank. Um, so it's our, we're fronting the money and, and as we meet a schedule, then they reimburse us.
Okay. So, and then back to my question that I asked earlier, can you elaborate on the funds that, from the county and where you said you guys just found, found out about them? That, that they not notify us, and what was that money for?
Um, I, Larry didn't pass that information on, I was reading at the day and caught it in that language.
We just hate to give money back, so.
We have to, so, let me find what that was. So, what was said in here is the city has obtained a forgivable principal loan for design in the amount of two hundred and five thousand, five hundred dollars for the design of a project, and has received grant money approved from the county economic development authority in the amount of, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we define shall cover the cost of design planning aspects at the current, are currently a work in progress with RH two consulting engineers. So, it's supposed to go towards the sewer plant, um, I believe, for part of that loan. So, I made a note here today after calling Larry to see what we're supposed to do with that. So, I'm going to call Dave McClure tomorrow, ask for extension, and then I'm going to also call RH two to see if they've spent any money on this, and then they need to start with the procedural process to reduce that cost.
So, it's not a complete loss, you might still be able to save.
No, I think we're going to, yeah, I, I don't think, I'm hoping we don't use it, lose it, but I, I don't think we will. I think we just need to let the county know where we're at.
That's a big chunk of grant, so.
And, and make sure RH two, if they've spent any money in that arena, does it really, uh, save, is it supposed to go to the engineering expenses, and if it is going to the engineering expenses, we know we've had bills for them, so then we can submit for that money to reimbursement. Yeah, I'm the same way, I don't want to get money back.
Well, right, cause this project might cost the taxpayers more money, and that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant.
Yeah. I have a big chunk left, so.
Yeah.
So, that's what I want, so.
Thank you.
Anything else, Pat?
No, sir.
We'll go to, go with Police Department Chief, Hans Iker.
Oh, yeah, Mayor, apologies for me being late, been a crazy busy day for me. Last part of my day took me, uh, to Hood River, uh, so I just got some quick items, nothing big, right, tonight. Is, uh, our new police car is finally done, it's due to be delivered tomorrow by eleven AM. Cases wise, before the end of the month, I expect we will top three thousand cases. We still have December to go, so, um, background investigation started on one of the new recruits, it's, it's, it's going now, and we're managing, so, again, apologies for being late, but I, I had to go to Hood River on a case.
Thank you. Go to the Fire Department, go, oh, huh.
Yes, and we got, um, I think I mentioned it before, we got a new, uh, pump for one of our brush trucks. Um, we ordered it first part of, um, last, or this year, excuse me, and we didn't get it, actually, it came right, um, middle of fire season, so there was some supply, demand issues there. Um, we're going to start breaking that down and replacing that pump, all the plumbing and all that good stuff on the truck. Other than that, it's holiday season, we do not, a lot of house fires happen, holiday season, colder weather, all that good stuff, so be safe.
Thank you.
I have another thing too, as well, so, we've been looking at, uh, maybe changing the city's cell phones plans. Um, right now, we go with US Cellular, and we've had some issues with the cellphone towers, um, for first response. So, Doug, who lives out of town, um, what, he used to have full service, now has none. So, AT&amp;T has bought all of US Cellular's cellphone towers, so they rent some of them, but they don't have as many. So, we're now losing our cell service. So, in talking with AT&amp;T, um, they have a program that they run called FirstNet, and it's a first responder cellphone plan. So, I sent them our bills that we use for the boosters that we have and our cell service. Um, right off the bat, they'll be about five hundred dollars a month less than what we're paying right now. And then they have some credit that they give back to us, and so for a total savings over the first twenty-four months of having them, it'll save the city around seventeen thousand dollars. So, we'll probably do an agreement with them, and then it comes back for you guys for consideration. But just to let you know, we're looking at switching those because of cellular coverage, we're not getting as good as that we used to have. And so, if they ever have a, cause it's a, it's a program that's based for first responders, so if there's ever like a big catastrophe and, you know, everybody is calling in, you know, the circuits are busy cause there's too many a natural disaster type situation, um, this program, first responders get out first. And so, that way, you would never lose first responders, so the police department, fire department, public works, they would never lose cell service. So, they actually have first in their data, then say just a normal citizen that is also calling. So, that way, the police department can always be in contact if there is, you know, like a nine eleven natural disaster, something like that, they implemented that after that, so that way it will help with that, so.
Thank you, Sam, thank you. Any comments or questions for Sam? If not, we'll go to resolutions, and this is the property tax levy for 2022, and Pat Munen will give us the background.
Uh, we just had the public hearing on this, so basically authorizing resolution seven twenty-four. Just need a motion from the City Council, um, authorizing resolution number seven twenty-four. For approval, there's a need to be a dollar money attached to this.
Uh, we've motioned to approve ordinance, uh, seven twenty-two.
Ordinance seven.
Resolution, seven twenty-four. Seven twenty-four, sorry, um, for approval as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number seven two-four, authorizing a property tax levy increase. Any further questions or discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item concerns ordinances on the agenda, the first one is ordinance number one five two-two, amending, I mean, it's, we're code chapter two point zero-four, this is what we had discussion in, um, last of the three public hearings. Pat?
Yeah, you guys held a public hearing, or the city held a public hearing on this a couple council meetings ago, and I told you we'd bring it back for adoption. This is, uh, I'm going to set for, I've got fifteen twenty. Oh, sorry, this is for the public hearing earlier tonight, chapter two oh-four, City Council, um, meetings. I've already kind of gone over the changes, so, just need a motion to approve, if that's what you wish to do.
I am Mayor, uh, I move to approve ordinance fifteen twenty-two, amending GMC chapter two point oh-four.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to approve ordinance number one five two-two, amending GMC chapter two point zero-four. For questions or comments, Steve?
When will this go into effect?
First of the year, I believe, I think.
Well, yeah, we need to run it in the paper for ten days, um, usually before ordinance will take effect.
It'll be in December.
Or first January, we need.
Yes.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance fifteen twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
I'm getting tired, guys, sorry. Been a long day, um. Okay, fifteen.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-three.
We just did twenty-two. We're now on fifteen twenty-three, amending the twenty twenty-two budget.
Yeah, and we're just amending ordinance number fifteen twelve, which is the twenty twenty-two budget, and providing for increased appropriations for the current expense fund, city street fund, current adjustment program fund, drug enforcement investigation, and tourism fund, and the wastewater sewer fund. These are, uh, this is our third quarter, um, adjustment to the twenty twenty-two budget of showing the adjustments, or some of the expenditures where there was budget, uh, where adjustments needed to be done. The current, the current expanded fund increases in appropriations in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars to cover increased costs for during business revenues covered to increase appropriations will come from available cash reserves. The street fund is an increase in appropriation in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand to cover costs of several capital outlay projects, including the street bike project, the buyer's street road improvement, and the Semco drive approach project revenue to cover the increased appropriation will come from the STIPS fund from Clickatet County. Everyone know what STIPS funds are? Do these, you guys all understand what STIPS funds are?
Could you explain it?
Yeah.
So, it's federal money that the county, how we get, uh, the county applies for money, um, for federal dollars that, and, and there is earmark money for road improvements. So, when they apply for that money per capita for the county, any jurisdiction in that county, which would be the three cities, um, get a portion of that money, so we get, so when they calculate their projects, those are, they do, we get a percentage of that money they apply for, and the more money they apply for, the bigger percentage we get. So, um, I think last year, or the last time it came in, I think it was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, if I recall correctly. I, I'm, I'm pretty sure I've seen that in the budget someplace, that's what they got. So, that's where that money's coming from. Very rarely do we get it every year, but it can occur, but it, it's like clockwork every two years, so.
And earmark for streets.
Yep. The criminal justice, uh, program fund is. The Criminal Justice Program Fund is increase of appropriations in the amount of thirty-five hundred to cover increased expenditures of special law enforcement programs. Uh, revenues to cover the increased appropriation will come from available cash reserves. Drug Enforcement Investigation Fund increase appropriations in the amount of five thousand to cover increases related to ongoing operations on the K nine, city's K nine revenues to cover the increased appropriations will come from available cash reserves, and that five thousand dollars was basically the dog got injured and had to have surgery. So that was that, that, is that correct, Chief? Yeah, I just want to make sure, so. The tourism funds to increase appropriations in an amount of nineteen thousand dollars to keep increased expenditure related to city expenditures for the the community days event, revenues to cover the increased appropriation will come from available cash reserves.
What, what was those expenses?
I would have to know.
For community days?
Yeah.
I know some of it was the, um, dumpsters that we had down there and porta potties. We paid for those, and so, and then there were some other things that.
We probably need to do a little better planning for our committee board.
Well, the problem was is that there was no, for the tourism dollars for community days, um, because the city doesn't, we don't apply and put our own, what we spend out for community days, we don't actually put that in for the approval. We just, you know, we just do it at the end.
So, just as just a thought, and I was going to, I'll talk to the tourism committee group about this. But instead of us using this one, we should be using the earmarked funds of tourism dollars and having the, usually these things are controlled by the chamber and always operated by the chamber. And if they just need to apply for more money, then we give them more money to do that. And if they take over, then we're not having to do this.
Okay. Yeah, there, I know there's a lot of expenses with every event, you know, there's traffic control for parades for the events for all that. There's our public works are putting up the bouncy houses.
That's also those leeches.
Then they gotta come back after at night to take care of them.
And trash them.
And, yeah, so, I mean, there's a lot of expenses that we should probably plan ahead so that we're not surprised.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, and then the water sewer fund is increase appropriation in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to cover increase in supplies of fuel costs and the capital outlay projects for the replacement of buyer's street water main line reserve covered, uh, cover the increases appropriate will come out of available cash reserves for those departments. So that's pretty much it. That's what the adjustments are from. And then you will get another one of these and by probably the end of January.
I'm going to say the same thing. We're spending a lot of cash reserves. When do we run out of cash reserves?
Well, some of that stuff is put in motion before it's got.
I know. Oh, no, I'm not placing blame on you, Pat. I understand. There's just a lot of expenses coming out of cash reserves and, you know, out of replacements. We continue to have those expenses. Some things are just unforeseen, the water line on buyer's street.
Well, yeah, a lot of things last year, you know, no one, um, you know, everything went up and particularly you know, the eight percent, um, inflation is not a true picture of what's really going on in the economy, particularly on the petroleum product side, which is water. I don't know, most, a lot of people don't understand this, but water hiding PVC pipe and, and a lot of water supplies have petroleum products in it, which is almost doubled in price, as you guys seen earlier this year, a list that we brought to that's costing us fifty-four thousand. In two years ago, we spent twenty-five thousand dollars buying the same material. So it's doubled.
How many of these increased expenses do you see continuing to be increased expense? For example, the lead payout administration transition, that was kind of one time thing with Larry heading out, or some of these larger expenses, something to see on.
I don't see fuel costs as going down at all right now. I think, you know, as we've said and talked about it here, we need to do, we're in the process of doing a rate study. We I recommend sooner than later, that early in the year, that we increase our utility rates and also increase our utility tax on ourselves, just so the public understands, we're taxing ourselves on utilities and make those adjustments to help cover next year's expenses. Right now, we're balanced and we can go through the year, but we're we're still, we need to start billing our cash reserve back up, not keep dwindling it down, or at least stay in status quo and budgeting type. But, you know, it's it's a challenge because we have a community that's trying to be progressive and get a lot of things done that need to get done, and we got a lot of failing infrastructure out there that we, I wouldn't say on the water side we don't. I I have concerns on the wastewater side, but you know, with the Public Works Trust Fund loan, we should wipe out the majority of our major concern water line issues right now. That doesn't mean, and, you know, we still got the main line at some point in the next decade, um, coming in from the spring source, we're going to look out, and there's always maintenance issues. Wells tend to, you know, have problems and need to be rebuilt, and there's, you know, reservoir, reservoir coating, reservoir cleaning things, but never just maintenance items. This is, this is the actual infrastructure side where we're having to replace things. You know, I wish there was, we're in the nineties where we're flushing public works money, but that's just not the reality we live in nowadays.
When it's time to replace stuff, it's old.
Do we have any word when we might see that results of that rate study, or?
Probably not anything. Probably till May.
Oh, really? So we can't take action on what needs to be done?
We've sent them some information, but we still need to send them more information.
Yeah, I mean, that's what you just said. If we take action before we get that rate study.
You can take action anytime you guys want. I mean, you, basically, we're basing the ten percent on inflation alone.
Right.
So, um, anything beyond that, going above that, I would not recommend doing until that rate study comes in.
Okay.
We need to get support of that, too. We don't have to wait until May to take action, then? We need now, uh, a motion on ordinance number one five two three, amending the twenty-two budget. Do we have that?
Um, motion to amend the budget, that's considered.
I'll second it.
There's no further questions or discussion. We moved it, say it to approve ordinance number one five two three, amending the twenty twenty-two budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item, and thank you very much for all that you've covered already. The next item is the report of officers, and we'll hear from our council membership when we get a Steve Johnson.
Uh, I just have a question. Are we going to have a public works committee?
Yeah. What time?
Uh, what do we have? Four? Was it four?
Clark's been working on it, right?
Is that okay with?
I gotta leave by quarter to five. Does anybody, can I leave by quarter to five? So if you want to start earlier, it's gonna take longer.
Three?
Three's fine with me, yeah.
We need three orders.
Three, okay, tomorrow, three o'clock.
And I'll, I'll make the rest of my time today.
I've carried on long enough already. Nothing from me today. Thank you.
Lauren.
Lauren, report.
Hi, Keith.
Nope.
The only question I have is for Pat about events committee.
Yeah.
When are the applications going to be put out with the public?
They're going to be put out.
They're going to be put out. Okay, I wasn't sure. Okay, and those are due back when?
That's a good question.
I think the email said December second.
Okay.
It's right away.
Okay, perfect, okay.
So I got it.
Okay, what did I do?
I'll show you an email.
I'm just excited for the Christmas events and, you know, um, I was going to ask Dave, I think it was the email, cookie tasting.
Did you get that?
Email.
Do you want in?
Yeah, absolutely. Come on.
I'll hook you up.
I'll even take a day off for just for that.
Turnip tasting?
No, cookie tasting.
Oh, cookie. I thought it changed to.
Gingerbread.
Gingerbread. Yeah, but they have to bring like a cookie or a something to be able to taste separate from destroying their house.
Right.
Tear it down.
I'm all for it, you know? So, yeah, just looking into all the holiday events.
Yeah, it's a great time of the year.
Yep.
My one.
Uh, Mayor, I just say happy Thanksgiving to everyone, so that's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you. So this, on the mayor's side, this is a very unique holiday that we celebrate this week, Thanksgiving. And I hope as you go through your celebration and visiting with your family and others, that you'll think of all the things that you do have in this country, not just in Goldendale, to be thankful for. It, it, there's a lot to it, and if you look at it a little deeper, it'll really help you to really appreciate that Thanksgiving and all of that. And now we'll go to public comment. Is there anyone here in the room for public comment? Probably not, or anybody on the line in the Zoom or on the telephone line? If not, we will close public comment. And the next item, it's executive session. We'll need to clear the council room for that, and we expect thirty minutes is the length of time for the executive session, and there'll be no decisions made, but we will open the meeting back up after the executive session, and it may be meaningless today. Okay, and you may want to take a break while we're getting everything started.